I'll be famous.
We're ready. Okay. At this, at this time, we're now officially call our meeting to order. We have a quorum and we were open with invocation and a pledge. I have a prayer in me today. Dear Father, Happer, we thank you. We thank you for this opportunity to come together and worship, to be able to address the needs, but to address the business of our city. We ask that you keep us focused, that you give us wisdom, knowledge, and then most of all, an understanding. In law, we just pray for those that are struggling in our city, those that have asked us for help and need. In law, we know that you supply all things. And God, we just trust you that everything is going to work for the good of us because we love you and we're living according to your will. And we give you the praise and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thank you so much, all those that came, ladies and the sisters that came in spite of the way. We appreciate you coming and all of you that are here. With that being said, we have, we do recognize everybody else. There's only, we'll go to our comments from the audience and we have one presentation, one speaker, Scott, will be coming and sharing with us all of three minutes.
Mayor, council members and audience, good to see all of you. I here and I stand before you with extreme concern in my heart. I have tremendous disappointment in a few council members again that now stand in the way of a great opportunity for the citizens of our community, this incredible community, to be a part, planning it leads to progress. Yes, asking our citizens, your constituents, to come to a meeting that is designed for their council district, that has city department heads and dialogue with each other about caring and things that they really would like to see in their particular precincts. We had the first one. It was a tremendous success. But now it is my understanding that my precinct too, and then I believe there's another precinct that's not having their particular meeting. And I just stand before you and go, why is that? Because it slows the progress down of the one, two, three, being able to ask folks about their ideas, to share at least and be informative to them. I feel that that's a pulse of our precincts, our constituents negatively will, you know, negatively halt us anymore. This could be construed in that way that there is a feeling that they don't need to be a part. And that to me is disappointing. So what I ask is, is that when you have a major issue or when we have the opportunity to share with our constituents, that's extremely important. It is my understanding that y'all have done that very often in the past. And I think that it's a great progressive state because when you plan together, you have the opportunity of saying teamwork makes a dream work. So now it is us, it is us to be able to see those particular meetings to come to fruition and us to have a greater understanding of those who elect us on their needs and how we as representatives can fulfill those needs in those particular precincts. And we're going to see some unique, different perspectives, but at the same time, it will allow you to come up with a plan that we can do to get, to make this community a tremendous, strong and healthy community for us to raise our children and future generations to be a part of. Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate your, the opportunity for this talk.
Thank you. That was the only one from the, that we had from the audience. But I'd just like to take a moment. I don't know, we mentioned it last time, the United Methodist Army, that they're going to be in the city. There are some flyers. They're both English and Spanish. If you know of an elderly person or someone that's in need of repairs and they've been through our community before. I know some of you are familiar with them and if you know, if you would like to pass them to your church, but they will be working basically in the city. They won't be going outside of the city limits. And so I'll just leave those here. I think I carried them back home last time. I put them back. But if you need any extra, just let us know if you know somebody that might need that service. And they basically do ramps and those kind of things. But they don't get on the roof. I think I mentioned that last time. And so with that being said, does anyone else ever come in?
Yes, Mayor. My understanding is, is in all your, in y'all, you're getting, you get an understanding. So I would like for, I know that I had asked Mr. Angstein to do a town hall meeting. So from the town hall meeting, the roundtable evolved. So it's not a specific way or a specific order, am I correct? That council members have to address the roundtable, am I correct? So in other words, if you would be so kind to explain how you are organizing the roundtable so the people can get an understanding of how that actually works. So I don't think that's been explained.
I will. As part of my city manager's update, we have, that way it's not in response.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So at this time, if there are no other comments from the council, we'll go to the minutes. Regular session, February 3rd, 2025. Special session, February 10th, 2025. Approve of the minutes. You've had them in your possession.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor?
There's a, there's a question on the, on the minutes. I know one area, number four on page seven, where it says, "As a result, the city was required to retain an outside legal counsel for this matter." We were not required. We were given the option to retain a outside legal representation.
I don't, I don't think you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Right here where it says, Mr. Angstein explained that the city had 20 days to respond to the lawsuit after it was filed and the Texas, the TML would not provide legal coverage of, for breach of contract lawsuits. As a result, the city was required, we were not required, we were given the option to retain outside legal representation. Required and option is totally different. They didn't require us to do that.
So the courts will, the, um, TML does not require, they offer us coverage of representation for defense. In that case, if they did not offer any coverage for us, the courts would require us to retain counsel in order to respond to a lawsuit. So if there is a concern about the, the result, I feel like it would probably be a requirement, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to abide by the court deadlines of the 20-day response for attorney.
Well, it was suggested because the, the, um, the legal attorney suggested and asked for permission through Ms. Casper if she would give us options to receive.
Are you proposing, you're saying that we don't have to have legal counsel?
No, 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 no. I'm saying it's, it was, what I'm saying, the wording is, is, it said it was required.
That's up to council if y'all would like, in your motion to accept these minutes, if y'all want to change, if y'all feel like.
Well, I mean, it was stated in, that's what we were given was the option is not requirement.
The, what I'm saying, it said that I say.
We got an attorney.
What it was, what it's saying here, the minutes say that I explained this process. And in me explaining that process, I feel like that was pretty accurate, is that the courts require retaining of counsel in order for you to, I'm not an attorney and I wouldn't, if we did not retain counsel, we would not have.
Yeah, but the option and require is two different things. Requirement, I mean, I know that.
But it's a requirement. I mean.
We will have to.
Cause I'm not an attorney.
But they give us an option to.
Not retire or re.
Because when we were, well, I can't.
Either we're going to have an attorney.
That's up to y'all for the, for the minutes.
We were given the option because if you, if someone to go back and read it, they would say we were required. That means that.
When you say they, who are you saying they gave us an option? TML or the courts?
Um, Daniel mentioned it.
But, but he doesn't, he doesn't oversee.
No, but he, he makes a suggestion.
Right. But when it comes to requirements, we're required, I know, but the 20-day requirement is a response required by the district court when a, when a petition for a lawsuit is submitted, a citation is issued, you have 20 days to issue your response. And if we failed to issue that response, we would have been in bad, we would have fallen back and we would have had a, a problem with the courts if we did not meet that deadline. So I see it as a requirement that you have to retain counsel in order to respond to the, to the lawsuit. It requires an attorney. So if you, if you.
But we were given the option though, to retain or not.
Nobody gave us an option. It wasn't, I mean, it wasn't anybody's.
We had a discussion.
He discussed it, but he couldn't.
Courts require it. Not, not Mr. Daniel or not TML or not even me. The court, it's a, it's a, it's a lawsuit process. So, but in that being said, I don't believe it changes any of the intent. So if you feel like, and the council agrees that we should adopt these minutes as written with the exception to change requirement to the city was.
We got an attorney, right? It passed.
Right. But this is the minute, this is the minutes to document what actually happened.
All right. I make a motion that we accept the minutes.
And you can strike that sentence.
And strike.
As a result, the city was required to retain.
Requirement to an option. We got one. So we got an attorney. So it don't matter.
So you would like to amend your motion, motion to that order?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, any, any other discussion?
I'll second.
Okay.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to item number two. Fire Department Monthly Activity and Status Report for January 2025. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, City Administrator. For a month of January, we had a total of 27 calls. We, sorry, we had a total of 37 calls, 27 of those being inside of city units and 10 of those in our response areas that we covered with a cannon. There was no structural fires in the city and I hope to maintain that with the heat and weather in the next couple of days. We hope everybody does everything right and don't do.
Laid out heaters.
They're not supposed to be or using city cords and stuff like that. But there's a further breakdown in front of, for me off, I have an inspection.
Thank you. Okay, any comments?
I did want to make a, a mention here, bring the council's attention. As, as the first of the year rolls around, by, by requirements, by the bylaws of the fire department and requirements of maintaining membership with the volunteer retirement program, you're required to, to, in order to be a volunteer of the fire department to, to maintain a certain status of calls. You can't say you're a volunteer and never show up, right? So I think it's 25% and 25% of the calls, you should have made those calls. Showed up at least 25% of the time. And that's reflected in the drop in volunteer. Right now, with total volunteers and paid staff, he's at 15 members.
Oh, it is?
That's with all the paid staff and volunteers, he's a total of 15 total people on the fire department. It's always been that way, right? It's not been that bad. Like at the first of the, at the first of the year.
A certain percentage.
Correct. But it usually hasn't impacted you where you're falling down to 15 people. So that.
Okay, so we need to encourage volunteers.
We're slim.
Okay.
If you may, if you have any grand ideas, how to attract people, get with me and I'll be more happy to pursue that. We tried several things in the past. It's just, like I said, it's not just us. It's nationwide for its volunteers.
Across the, yeah, this. So what, what is the age?
18.
18?
Yes, ma'am, 18 and a driver's license and a clean record. And we will put you to work and train you. And if you want to pursue a career in fire, we got grants and stuff that we can get you where you can get certified as a firefighter, a paid firefighter.
Is that maybe we need to make another appeal to the school? That's probably our strongest.
This year and I'm hoping to hit them up again at the end of the year too.
But do we have any homeschoolers? Any of those? I don't know what the population. I know one, we had a moderate population.
I need to, I know there's a couple here in town. I need to go visit. Like I said, I picked the schools up at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, probably with the schools would be the.
And then I'm going to try to hit it up like in the high school, I hit the junior high first of the year and try to hit the high school up toward.
Well, one thing that the schools do have, they have a safety director. Now maybe that's one of the people you can contact to dialogue with. Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jake.
At this time, let's bring us to item number three. Police Department Manpower and Criminal Incident Report for January 2025 and Presentation of Annual Racial Profiling Report.
Good evening, Mayor, City Administrator. The Police Department Manpower and Criminal Activity Report for January 2025. Have a total of 16 officers, worked 2,584 manpower hours, responded to 382 calls for service, investigated 16 traffic accidents, made 57 arrests, stopped 396 motor vehicles, completed 64 reports and responded to 30 alarm calls, 26 of those were called.
Wow.
Well, you'll see a breakdown. I want to take some questions you may have on our criminal incident report.
Just for conversations, did the, while the DPS officers were visiting us en masse a couple of weeks ago, did it impact anything in terms of?
So it did create a lot of phone calls for me. I received a lot of phone calls questioning what was going on while I were here. Most of those phone calls were directed to the DPS sergeant, but we appreciate him being in town. They were highly visible. And their goal is the traffic enforcement and creating an atmosphere where people are by about a wall. So I know that they worked here for a week solid. They were very visible here in the city and not just in the city, outside the city, on the state and US highways too. But as far as creating any issues, there was no issues, but there, there were a lot of questions because it was so sudden.
And I really, I'm always amazed. People really don't understand the difference between the department, that y'all are not one big family.
They, so some people kind of categorize law enforcement altogether, but there are a lot of people that are able to differentiate the two. So it didn't create a huge problem for us. I think it was a positive deal overall.
Well, we're good that that worked way on.
Something I want to mention, and I, I bring this up to going forward, to keep this in mind. We talked before about block party ordinances and the issues that these block parties sometimes, because there's nothing that allows us to control them. Just over the weekend, we had an incident where a gentleman went into one of these parties that's known to have a lot of people. They went in with guns and ski masks and they robbed everybody at that party. Made away with a little over $8,000.
This was at a residence or?
No, this was, this was at a location that we frequently have block parties. It's just really a piece of property that people come together of and, and hang out on. I'm not saying that a city ordinance would have completely prevented that. By the time of morning and when this incident occurred, likely if we had an ordinance, that, that party wouldn't have been open or that incident wouldn't have been going on. So I would like to work with each one of y'all. We can talk about an ordinance, come up with a good ordinance for the city where it's not too, too restrictive, but it's fair to everybody. So we can get that in place going forward. So in the coming weeks and months, I'll be reaching out to each of you to, to discuss a potential ordinance on, on something related to block party.
Until nobody was actually hurt?
So there weren't some injuries, nothing serious. There were some weapons discharged. And like I said, suspects made away with over $8,000 in, in action.
They weren't apprehended yet? Or were they apprehended?
They, they are not, they have not been apprehended yet. Our investigators are currently working, active investigation on the case.
Well, we're glad that nobody got seriously hurt or anything. Cause what, when you do have a party, a lot of the people are not your locals. They're not people from the community and.
Well, some of our ordinance now is very large to, there are certain ordinances that allow us to, that we can act on. But there are very little when it comes to a party or a block party, for instance. A lot of cities have ordinances in place to restrict that.
Do you know why they're giving so much money there?
I won't comment on that at this time. But yes, we do know why.
Okay. So somebody else knew that too?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm trying to remember, was it in the city on it?
Yes, sir, it was in the city.
I'm trying to remember. You know, we talked about that at one time, had a long discussion. Is there a per, do they have to have a permit for a block party?
We, that was one of the things we talked about was.
Never found.
That ordinance ended up not passing, but that was one of the things in that ordinance to, to require if they wanted to have a block party, that they would come to city hall, get a permit, that we would have a contact person, you know, who's responsible. And they have a certain number of people that, that can attend. We, we've seen at times where we've had up to 500 people at a single block party. And that's, like the mayor said earlier, a lot of times it's people from out of town. So like I said, that's something I'll work on and I'll bring to y'all that we can all, you know, agree on and everybody's okay with. And then we can bring back, bring that back and forth to.
I've got some ideas on that.
Okay. Well, it sounds like a plan to put it on a future agenda. When you get us some information, kind of together what need to be discussed, we can bring it in as an item.
If there's no other questions, I'll move on to our annual racial profiling report. Did you know this is required by the state each year for us to present this report? So this is our 2024 annual racial profiling report. Start out on the top. We'll go down by race. African-American, total of 898. Asian Pacific Islander, total of 80. White, total of 2,216. Hispanic, 641. And Native American, 13. Overall total of 3,848. Below that, you'll see a breakdown of different topics and I won't go through all those. A lot of those are redundant. If you look at location of the stop, you have city streets, 760 stops made on city streets. US highway, 155. State highways, 2,784. County road, 3. And private property or other, 146. I'm going to move, move down to the very bottom on the left-hand side, race known prior to stop. That's a question that comes up sometimes. You'll see under the box, yes, we had 728. And under no, 3,120. Just for informational purposes, there's something that we train the officers to do and make them understand that it's okay if you know the race prior to the stop. With so much going on in the world, a lot of people think, a lot of officers think that I can't know that. But it's perfectly legal because there are certain times and certain situations where you're going to see that driver. You're going to see that they don't have their seatbelt on. You're going to know their race and it's okay to check that box. Obviously, if that number was reversed, that might be an area of concern, but that's, that's not a concern that we have at this time. And one other place I want to call your attention to is use of force resulting in bodily injury. There's a number one there. That was with a suspect. Suspect was found in possession of three kilos of methamphetamine. And when the officers attempted to replace him under arrest, he fled and fought the officer. During that scuffle, they did have to take him to the ground. He started complaining of soreness. And so they took him to the emergency room to have him checked out. He was medically cleared. He was okay. He was not harmed. But because he made that claim, that's why you see that number there. And for future purposes, that number could also include officers that were injured on those traffic stops.
Okay.
That's a good breakdown.
Any questions you may have about our report?
It seems like it's a better explained breakdown than it's been in the past. It's.
Yeah, I like the break, I like the breakdown.
It's a lot easier to follow. It's kind of lumped up last time. But this, you can see where you are. Thank you so much. Anybody else have any comments?
I want, I just want, I want to visit with you on next week or this week sometime. So we can kind of look at like the city streets, kind of see, look at that and give more explanation of, you know, where the actual stops or things like that have been, the nature of them, where they've been at.
One thing we try to do is we encourage the officers to move throughout the town, not spend too much time in one location. And that a lot of times, like you see the, the state highway number is so high. That's because the loop is the state highway. So there's a lot of time they spend on.
That's what it is, the state highway.
Yes, we'll be glad to hear what you can.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comment? I'm sorry.
Thank you, bud.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay. Let's bring us to item number four. Update from the city administrator on city construction projects, new business projects, and animal shelter.
Mayor, council, every once in a while, I like to bring everybody into the loop. I do speak with everybody off and on individually and, but in order to speak on these projects where everybody gets the same information, I think it's good to talk about some of the, the things going on in the city. And I've, I've highlighted a few of them here. So in following up with our South Fifth and Bell Street project that we approved at our last meeting to, to redo the storm drains and curbing on, those materials are ordered in construction. We'll begin as soon as every, all the materials are in. South Seventh Street from Bowie up to Goliad, from the Methodist Church down to the flower shop there, all those water lines have been completed. Those have all been installed. What they're wanting to do as they're moving forward, once they get a good block of, some good weather, construction weather, they're want, they're going to do multiple streets on the construction, restabilization and paving of those streets. So right now they're working through, kind of getting ahead of themselves on some waterline projects. South Seventh is complete. South Tenth Street is, it has a couple last projects on valves and some hydrant connections and stuff. But South Tenth Street is complete. They're working on Gray Street currently. They're beginning the process of pulling, pulling all the water lines, installing valves and getting South Gray Street completed. Then they'll move across Houston and do North Grace. That'll be the next waterline continuation, continuation of construction. We have a, a new round of CDBG funding that has been opened up and we have until April. I believe it's April 1st to put in our pre-application. It's a, basically saying that we're interested in applying. So it's a pre-app. They do a first round of scoring and once you're scored and allowed to apply, then you can go through the process of actually applying for the CDBG project. Our last CDBG project was MLK, the, the portion of MLK that we did the first round before we followed up with our SIB construction. So that was, that was our last round of CDBG funding. So it can do anything from streets to water lines to sewer, sewer projects. In the past, we've done a couple CDBG projects for sewer line replacement. We're under a current sanitary sewer overflow initiative plan. And within that plan, we committed to doing several. Um, and it, within that plan, we committed to doing several, uh, sewer line projects, um, to address I and I. So to, to address infiltration and inflow. Whenever it rains, our wastewater plants are filled up with stormwater. So it means a lot of the water that we're treating is not sewer. It's, it's, uh, it's storm, it's stormwater. And we're having more and more problems that, you know, in my, I know that the, the one that we see the most, the biggest problems that we see the most are the streets. We see street problems that really need a lot of attention, but wastewater needs a continued, a, a continued, uh, you know, focus on. Um, we have several more projects where we know we have some old clay tile pipes and some of them are big interceptor lines that we know that just needs to be replaced. Uh, we're taking in lots and lots of water through those, uh, lots of old manholes. We have one that we're fixing to replace on South Gray Street. Um, right where we're doing some of the street construction, uh, the manhole is basically collapsing on us. So we're going to do that, you know, out of our own pockets, replacing those manholes. But there's just, all those manholes now, we have an SSO guy that are inspecting all those manholes. They're entering them into our GIS system, taking pictures of them, recording them. So we're getting lots and lots of good data of all of our priorities out in the field that need to be addressed. But anytime we get opportunities for funding, um, those are some of the things that we can apply for. However, next month, we'll bring it back to you. I'll get some input from council on some of the items that y'all want me to apply for. And it's in a pre-application. If we do get scored, we will have a public hearing and go through the full process. But, um, sewer lines, water lines, streets, sidewalk projects, those are all things that we can apply for. East.
Are you done?
Uh, not yet. I can, I can stop if you.
You can take a question? Uh, yeah, I, uh, with, with CBDG project, and I think you, and I had some discussion this week about, uh, MLK. So I was asking about the grant on MLK. Why, um, why is, why, I mean, do we apply for partial grants? Or do we apply for a full grant? And I remember you said something to the fact that you apply for the maximum. So, but MLK runs from the Loop three oh four all the way down to what, Goliad?
West Goliad.
West, yes, West Goliad. So did we get a grant to do the, do MLK? Meaning from the Loop to West Goliad or? Can I explain that? Cause I'm, I'm getting questions about that because.
So I'm, like I broke it down in the email, um, and my response was, we applied for the maximum. However, um, last year's maximum was five hundred thousand. They increased it to seven hundred and fifty. Five hundred thousand, when it goes into street construction, is pretty limited. You, you, MLK is a little over a mile. I believe if, last time we checked, it was right at seven or eight thousand feet. So it's about a mile and a half of street. Five hundred thousand, um, only got us that far. So we applied for the maximum, but there was no remaining grant funds left. And so, uh, we had a qualif, uh, the SIB, the State Infrastructure Bank, that was a, was a bond, it was a loan that we borrowed. That money was, MLK was qualified from the Loop up to Bell Street. The smaller portion that used to be called Commerce Street from it, Bell to West Goliad. Um, and the state's system does not shut, did not show the rest of MLK as a qualified street. And so that's why I sent that map. This, it shows that there's only from Bell to the Loop that is, uh, qualified for SIB funding. So we used bond funds, uh, borrowed money to finish out MLK up to the amount that the project allowed the money to go into. If we're to, to, to do the rest of MLK, which it, it needs it as well, um, we're going to have to use other sources. SIB will not fund money. Or if y'all want, like I say, we do have seven hundred and fifty thousand that we can apply for. We can do the other, the, the remainder of MLK out of the next round of CDBG funding to complete the full length of, uh, MLK.
But maximum.
But it's not that we applied for part of the street. We applied for the maximum amount of the grant and it only.
That doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna pay for the entire street.
Right. And so, uh, we went shopping with a known dollar amount and it only la, and it only addressed a portion of MLK out of the grant funds. So we used borrowed funds to complete MLK up to, uh, Bell Street. And so if we want to do the rest of it, it'll have to be out of a new source of funding.
So what about Cedar? Cedar, how, how was it addressed Cedar?
It would have to be new sources of funding. Uh, we did, we did preliminary engineering. We applied for it out of our SIB project. Um, but once again, the SIB project, we only borrowed six million dollars. And so council decided, they picked and prioritized which streets are the worst or the most traveled. And that's how, you know, that's why MLK was selected over Cedar. And so, um, you know, uh, there were several of them that were not able to be done within that, within the SIB project funding. So if we want to do the rest of the streets that we did the preliminary engineering on, we would have to go and borrow more through the SIB program. Um, or another source of funding.
But at the.
Clark, San Jacinto, there were, uh, Cedar. There were several streets that were not, that were left off the project because we ran out of, of funding.
Okay, what, uh, San Jacinto, so, um, Sycamore.
We did not apply, Sycamore was not applied for in the SIB project. It is a qualified street though, so those are all streets we can apply for. Those all have to be paid, paid back though. They're not grants.
Okay.
We have to borrow money against our tax rate.
You know, just to add, one of the, the council had the option of picking the street. It wasn't that John got to pick the street. Everybody was given the list and they went through and decided which streets they actually wanted to what percentage. It wasn't just a, it was based on, I get, I don't know what the strongest council member were, but it was based on distributed on what the council themselves.
And we tried to distribute across the city to where each precinct had some projects.
And a percentage of the process.
Um, and then we have, uh, so we've, we've just got approved for a categor, categorical environmental exclusion through Texas Water Development Board. And essentially, there's another whole process that we got approved to exclude having to go through. We did not, we did not have to go through that process of an environment, a full environmental design and review for East Houston and East Goliad when we're doing the water lines because we're using current water lines, we're replacing existing disturbed grounds. We're not putting in new water lines or disturbing new grounds. Um, and so after, in a lengthy process, that's the, the main reason that, well, that's the only reason that we've been waiting up until now. So this week, we got approval for, um, exclusion of the environmental process because they verified that we're only using existing, uh, disturbed ground, you know, as our work area. Um, so we're going, we published that in the newspaper. We're required to publish that in the newspaper. The TW, Texas Water Development Board, um, excluded us from that requirement. And they're finalizing engineering and will probably, uh, we hope to be going to bid in the next three to four months, probably sooner. That's the worst case scenario. But, um, East Houston and East Goliad for new water lines, um, will be going out to bid in the next few months, probably early, late, late spring, early summer.
And after that, this one, that, we, we've got to get the water lines done for the state.
The state, I met with the state, um, and I have that here, but I'm solid, I'll go ahead and touch on that. The state, we met with them a couple weeks ago. They're moving up, uh, their plans are to move up South Fourth Street, um, and get that done. They're doing current construction projects on two eighty-seven and on, um, uh, South Nineteen. So they're going to continue that inside the Loop. And there will either continue it up to Bell Street or up to the square, depending on the amount of change order and funding. They're gonna go ahead and do that since we replaced that water line, uh, down South Fourth Street. That's all been replaced with all brand-new water lines that we did a couple years ago. Then the rest of them, um, is going into their next fund, they're putting in their, in their next funding year, which will be roughly twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. That'll give us all of twenty twenty-five to do the waterline construction. And hopefully get both of those highways done to allow that to be rebuilt. Um, we met today with engineers, wastewater plant and water wells that's moving forward. We did some, we're, they're trying to finish the preliminary engineering. So they're, uh, they're doing site, uh, reviews of our wastewater plants, um, as well as a lot of our prob, problematic areas of sewer line, uh, uh, sewer mains, areas that we know that we're taking in a lot of water, where the lines are collapsing or separating and we're bringing in stormwater. We're gonna prioritize a lot of our wastewater funding for those areas. So we're, we're trying to identify that first with some, uh, some smoke testing. And, uh, we'll begin that process pretty quick. Um, I also wanted to touch on, I actually spoke with a council member the other day that was not, had not been down on our South Loop. And so I wanted to just bring this up to council. Um, this is the state of construction as of today. So it's a gloomy, it's a gloomy cloudy day, but, um, we have a really big building being built in the industrial park. They, um, they expect this building to be completed in, um, kind of the May timeframe and will be starting job fairs and, and hiring process, um, in the spring. Um, we're looking forward to that. We did, um, as it relates to this, we are also moving forward with the FTZ application. We've gotten a letter of concurrences from all of our local, uh, taxing entities and submitted that. And, uh, so we look forward to when Nancy goes to Washington in a couple weeks for us to have a, a good result on that. Um, we also, this is the Provalis building. We've done some, we've done a lot of landscaping and cleaning up of the building. Um, there's still a few things that we want to touch on and kind of clean up a little bit more. Um, the inside of the building. Well, this is the outside again. We have a generator. The generator's been installed and it's connected to the building. We're, we're live on that. Um, the inside of the building, they're filling this up. They've, they've gotten big coolers to put right over here by the, for people's lunches and whatnot. So we have a cafeteria, um, that's set up. They begin setting all the rooms up. They have all their data pulled, uh, all their workstations, new, new, uh, desks and, uh, computer monitors. Here's another room. Right now, right now, we're set up for, the goal is for sixty people, um, for phase one. Phase one construction has been completed. Uh, we finished that, um, that we agreed to. And now, um, I got an email from them today saying that they're moving forward to, into the, we, they're wanting to meet to, uh, next week to schedule job fairs and, and to put together a program to begin, uh, doing some heavy advertising and trying to bring in some crews. They're, they've got several contracts that are designated for the Crockett location. Um, and so they're ready to move forward. They're excited. And we're really, really excited. Um, any questions on the Texas Capitol, Provalis? Um, the last couple of things that I wanted to talk about, um, I wanted to bring notice to council today um, in a more formal way, but then I want y'all to begin thinking and preparing for discussions soon. Um, when it, as it relates to our swimming pool. We did get notice from the Texas, uh, Parks and Wildlife, the grant that we had submitted for a swimming pool to, 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 uh, combined with our match was denied. Uh, well, it wasn't denied, we, we did not rank high enough. Uh, out of sixty, I believe it was sixty-eight applications, we came in at thirty-two and they only had enough funding for twenty-two. So we fell out of the funding bracket. So we have options that we need to discuss. So I need to know what, from council, how to move forward with the swimming pool project. Can, can, bring it in, bring the project in, make it a smaller project, borrow more money, or do another project? Or, you know, spend the money elsewhere. Council's gonna have to just make some decisions on, and I'm gonna try to present y'all as many,
Option.
Valid options that we can, uh, move forward with. Um, the, uh, animal shelter, I also wanted to touch on that. Um, we're, we finalized, we, we're, we're trying to finalize in the next day or two the job description for the shelter attendant or shelter technician, um, so we can bring somebody in and begin getting that person trained and helping us in the initial implementation of our animal shelter and getting that, um, running of. We have, we've been meeting with our, with a veterinarian that is willing to assist us. Um, she has provided us more insight and, and we've been able to work together to come to better agreement on what our, our relationship or partnership with her will be. Um, she has affirmed that she's not wanting to come in and compete with other veterinarians. She's not wanting to, uh, set up and necessarily use our clinic as a private practice, uh, to where we're, you know, we, we want to be able to support all of our local veterinarians without spending tax dollars, um, inappropriately or competitively to help somebody with a competitive advantage. She's very, very helpful, um, and is, is wanting to assist us on this project. And so I'll be able to bring to council some, some options as it comes to our partnership agreement with her. Um, but we do want to post that position in the next, uh, few days, uh, for a, for a shelter attendant to help us get this ball moving forward. Cause we're, right now, we don't really have somebody in that position. So we're trying to take care of it on, on our own and it's been hard with all the other projects going on.
Would it be, would it be available, would she be available to come, I mean, to meet with council to?
Yes, that'll be part of it, yes.
Okay, perfect.
For sure. Um, the last two items, uh, Community Roundtable, uh, we've been doing, uh, we started the Community Roundtable. And so, um, the goal from council, that, that we've been requested by council, this is, um, this is a push from the city that we've been wanting to support. It's, it's difficult sometimes in a council meeting for us to have candid discussions. And to answer, when people speak for three minutes, we're not allowed to respond. Community Roundtable gives an open forum to where we do not have, um, a quorum of council there. We have a council member representing his, his or her precinct. And then we have all the city leaders that may or may not have the questions, but can get the questions answered, right? And so that's, that was our goal and it to be spurred and, and supported by that council member. So a lot of it's going to be at that council members, uh, at that council members', um, speed or, you know, at that council members' direction, you know?
Discretion.
Discretion as, hey, this is when I'm available. This is what I can or can't do. Hey, I would like to have it at this church. Or I would like to have it, or I talked to a friend of mine that has a venue, we're gonna do it over here. So we want it to be led and supported by the host precinct, uh, council member. And so, in that being said, our goal was between now and through May to do all five precincts and li, use that as a big, as a big tool approaching our, our budget workshops. In go, getting into our budget workshops in May and June, we have a lot of information that we've received from our precinct, um, up until then. So we did not want to delay at least having one every month. We wanted to have one at least every month. That way we did not push it off and finish up some in June, July. And so, um, at this time, there, there was some scheduling conflicts. And so that's why we've moved on to precinct four currently. We do hope that, um, each council member will be able to work with us and provide dates and, um, and let us know when they, when they can, uh, be available. And so we'll use that moving forward.
Oh, I just said in this, I think it's, when it was broken down like that, it's gonna be so much more effective. Town meetings are wonderful, but basically it's a collaboration of, of, it's just a group of people. But you're really not getting what they want to hear specifically to the area. You know, you go to a lot of meetings and you hear a lot, but you really want to know, what are you gonna do for me? What have you done for me lately? Like that. But, uh, and so I, I think the first one kind of gave us a frame of what it could be, what people really cared about. Even to the point of what can we do speci, specifically for our to get our streets fixed, maybe by another source? And there was some sources introduced that I, I wasn't aware of and I'm sure they weren't. So the one thing about it, and we do appreciate, uh, council person, woman, we said woman person, we all get their thing. But when she brought up a community, I mean, uh, a town meeting, it, it sounded really good at the time, but getting everybody a good representation of the time is, uh, it's really hard because you're gonna get pretty much the same cross-section of the people that kind of come to the council. So I think it's just so important that somebody actually can stand up and hear what's happening in their area with the person that's, like I said, the council does have the power to make the recommendation, even when we talked about. Even when we talked about the streets just then, they decide which ones they kind of want and why they want and which ones. So, they know more about the areas. So, I think that's, it's a real strong thing. And, and like I said, I did see it, we saw, saw it, the first one went very well and as we grow and learn and we'll be able to put them on a stronger timetable so that it's not conflicting with anything. You know, it's always going to be a conflict. But to the best of our abilities, we'll be able to hear what every precinct has and what their priorities are. And I think that's awesome, especially as you prepare to go into the budget. No shock, no surprise, everybody pretty much know where we are. Thank you.
Well, I just want to thank John for making it come to fruition because that's pretty much, you know, what I was looking at. And, and he made it, um, happen. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
What was that?
That's it.
All right, thank, we thank you for the update. Uh, it's always good to have an update so we can worry about what we need to do next. So, we know that things are being done. Okay, at this time, let's bring us to item five, discussion regarding, regarding solid waste agreement.
Mayor and council, so we have a, um, what I, what I hope to result out of the, out of this agenda item is for council to, um, we've given you, you some time to go through our franchise agreement with Piney Woods Sanitation. Um, and at the end of this, I would like some direction from council on whether, um, this is an agreement that y'all want to review and, and pinpoint and highlight some areas of focus that we need to adjust in our contract to, in order to move forward into a renewal process? Or if y'all feel like it's time to go out and go, go out for bid? And so, I need a direction from council, uh, before I start the bidding process, I need council to tell me so. Um, or if they feel like we're getting a good service that might need some, some little tweaks or some misogyn on that we can, uh, move forward with our current provider, um, then obviously, um, there's some benefits in that as well. And so, I wanted to touch on just, just a few of those. We also have representatives from Piney Woods, um, sanitation here that can answer questions, talk to us, and maybe they have some more things that they want to add. So, just to recap quickly, in, in twenty sixteen, when I came, when I came on, we were dealing with, we had just recently underwent a, into contract with Waste Connections. They were bought out, I believe, from Progressive. And then, so we worked with Waste Connections. Without bringing in, without talking too much about that, what we experienced during that process, this was a big corporation, a big company, uh, probably worldwide. We know that it's throughout the US. Whenever we asked for certain accommodations or specific things, they were unable to accommodate. We asked, in order to go into a renewal process with them, we really want smaller trucks. You are tearing up our streets. Our streets are getting destroyed by these massive trucks that come in with one driver from out of town. They're, they bring the truck in, service the, that entire area and then leave town with that same truck. Um, we need smaller trucks with smaller loads. And what I really liked about the rear loading process is not only that it provides more jobs, but it also provides a truck that only goes down that road once. It's not required to go down three-point turn around and come back down the same street twice in one day. That's twice the load on our street. They're hugging the curbs, they're riding right up against our, the edges of our road where our road is the most vulnerable and softer. It's, that's the weakest point of the road is up against that curb. And if you drive around town that you see curbs like the waves of the sea, that did not help. That was one of the biggest contributors to that process. They're stopping in the same locations every time, picking up that same can within the same probably two feet. That truck stopped every time they came there at the same place, so you have big ruts digging in. A, a request like that, even at a request, we know that it might cost us more, but it's, it wasn't, it wasn't feasible. So, that's why we went out for bid and we got a better price with our current provider. What we currently have now, we went into an agreement, um, our economic development also entered into an agreement where Piney Woods was willing to agree to bring jobs local instead of being serviced out of Huntington. Uh, they have a big office in Huntington. Instead of servicing it out of Huntington, they wanted to create a local hub here and service other communities from Crockett. So, they agreed to bring in twelve jobs if we would build them a, an office building. So, it was almost, it was the, our, our agreement with them was we would provide the office building, but yet it's still on our property. It's our, you know, if they leave, it's still our, our facility to continue using for other, servicing other contracts. Currently, they're at, um, the last time I spoke to them, they were at twenty-two employees instead of twelve, um, of local employees that they serviced quite a few other contracts with. If we do go out for bid, we do stand a risk of losing what we have primarily because if we go out for bid, this is going to go through their corporate office. Um, the bid requests are going to go to their corporate office where they use an entirely different pricing matrix. And, uh, we may end up in a situation where we're not able to maintain our current contract. I'm not aware, they, we had two other bids when we went out for bid last time and both of those companies were purchased by Live Oak, so they're all the same company currently. So, if we do go out for bid, there is a, there's a couple of options that I would like to eliminate. One is that I want to go out for bid for a company that is willing to address the specific needs that we have and not give us a one cut, a size fits all. And then secondly, that it's not a new stand-up company that looks at a contract and says, well, you know, hey, I can throw a company together, I can begin a garbage pickup service and it be, we'd be their new training grounds. That we, and so, those are my concerns moving forward with a couple, with, with, with bidding this out is that we, we're able to maintain a, a solid reputable, um, service, uh, for, for garbage. The, the economic development contract, that's, that expires this year, so they're, they're not under that economic development performance agreement. Um, they have
Met.
fulfilled it and superseded it. They've also brought in a mechanic shop, um, and they've moved a lot of their light mechanics work here locally instead of keeping that in Huntington as well. So, they're leasing, uh, another building from us, uh, on top of their current contract to provide some mechanicking, uh, servicing work there. That being said, we have until May, um, we have, May the fifth is our deadline to provide them notice that we do not wish to renew, that we're going out for bid. So, if we're going to start the bidding process, we need to start that pretty quick so we can have an answer before May the fifth. That way, they know whether they need to wrap up their services. And another company is going to require quite a bit of time to to develop their services, to buy the vehicles and the, and the carts and, and move everything in. So, that being said, you've had the contract, um, that we currently have with Piney Woods. Are there items that you would like to go over? When we have representatives here, uh, with Piney Woods, we also have their, uh, local site manager here, um, Mr. Tim Terry and Mr. Sonny Hubbard, he's the municipal manager with, uh, Piney Woods and Live Oak. And so, this is a time, time to talk to them about if you do have concerns or things that we want to develop into a new, into our renewal process. This would be the time that we could do that.
So, you say by May, uh, when I was reading the contract, it says something about we need to issue them notice within one hundred and eighty days.
Yeah. So, May is the one hundred and eighty day deadline. Cause the contract is November, uh, November the first.
Yes.
And so, one hundred and eighty days prior to that would be May fifth.
Including, okay.
Okay.
First off, Tim Terry is our manager here now. Y'all know JD, JD has knee replacement and he's out working month or two till his knee heals up. Tim's taken over complete operations of it. We have between sixteen and twenty-two people. We're like everybody else at the fire department, get people to come in is difficult sometimes. So, it kind of goes up and down. What we have done as a company is we've spent over a hundred thousand dollars on these carts that were brought into the city. We spent over a quarter million dollars on containers that we brought into the city. We have over a million dollars worth of trucks here and we spent three hundred and eighty thousand dollars on the transfer station. So, you see, this is not a small project and I would rather y'all, I mean, the city can do what it wants to, but you don't need to go to bid, beer is cheap now, it's what you're ever going to get. The people that would actually come in and take our contract would buy, had to buy what I told you we spent on new materials. And y'all seen what the pricing has done on everything. So, uh, you know, to get as cheap as what you have right now, I don't think it's going to be possible simply because we're using equipment, we're appreciating, uh, we're not having to buy a lot of new equipment. And the, uh, in the contract, it says we can give y'all up to ten, W R containers for cleanup. Well, through talking and conversation, we'll go to the transfer station. Really to put four, five or six containers somewhere to dump in, you're going to have a mess, you're going to have to have logistics to where it will handle that many containers when the transfer station is perfect. Just have them go to it, you don't have to have any containers, nothing gets out, nothing blows, it all stays in a container in the, uh, transfer station.
The containers that he's talking about, uh, what we've primarily been using those on are, um, either code enforcement or cleanup projects of abandoned homes that are collapsed and falling down. Different, uh, different projects like that, um, they'll bring in several containers. We, we use our bulldozer and skid steers and clean that property up.
Well, on our cleanup, the city cleanup, so the people coming down, they just come to the transfer station. There's no real reason to set these containers anywhere where you have to mount them because y'all know as well as I do, if you have a bunch of foot trash and nobody's watching, you know what's going to happen.
Yeah, we know where it goes.
Transfer station alleviates that situation. Now, one other thing that we do, uh, for every house that we pick up here, y'all get about a dollar and fifty cents a month on it. For our house, that's a franchise fee. For every container that we have through commercial areas, you get a, uh, a dollar for every hundred dollars that they spend. I mean, I, I mean, every ten, y'all get ten percent on our commercial. So, if we do twenty thousand dollars a month, y'all get ten percent of that. On all of our roll-off stuff of the big construction containers, whenever it's set out, depending on the size, twenty, thirty or forty, y'all get anywhere between forty and seventy-five dollars per load, franchise fee. So, see, y'all make a lot of money off of us also. And the fact that we pay taxes on all of our properties, you know, every can sets out, every container that sets out, every truck that runs, we pay personal property tax on. So, you know, it, this thing works both directions. We are wanting to keep this business, we don't want to get rid of it. We had fifteen more years left on our contract for our transfer station. What the transfer station allows us to do as a business is we can take our trucks and one of those situations we ran into when we made the buyout, and believe me, I like these guys, they're garbage people. They're just as good as the Webbers were, but I can tell a lot of people, y'all never met Mr. Weber? And you never met the guy that owns the company now, you just see us. But, um, we, we want to keep this, y'all are very important to us. Tim and his much, do as much as they can for the community, we try to be involved in every way that we're possible. And, uh, although the, a bigger company owns us, we still are a small company and we're here. And we also pick up the county, we have the county contract. So, we run everything out of here and, you know, it's just, there's no real reason to bid it out because we're getting everything that you need. We're paying, we got a lot of money and we're paying a lot of taxes and all the people that work here. From this area and they work here, so.
What I, oh, I'm sorry.
What, what can we do about people trying to get a hold of y'all and, and you can't get a hold of them?
We are going to put in a phone number that is nothing except for the city of Crockett. And when we get it in place, I give y'all the information, y'all, y'all can put it out however you want to. But there will be one person that answers this phone, she has to go to the powder room or go eat lunch, somebody else will take it. But it will be specifically for the city of Crockett.
Okay, what can we put in there if that don't happen?
We do, we do have that, um, we currently have.
Well, we currently have it and they can't do it.
No, I'm saying we have, if, if their contract requires cer- certain things, we have provisions for everything from missed collections, um, even to the, uh, item that you had mentioned a few days ago of, of collection prior to, uh, six o'clock in the morning.
Four thirty in the morning.
Um, that's been addressed, but like I say, if that continues to happen, it's a, there, there's a fine in here that we can assess them.
You know.
So, there, there are some ways for, to us to ensure that that does happen.
Well, we need to put that in there.
It's, yes, and I, it was just, I don't think we ever invoked it. Well, you know, one thing that I think backing out from the very beginning that we really have to consider, when we talked about economic growth for our community, we talked about bringing in a, a company. This is a company that came into our community. They met our guidelines, they, they provided, they took not their people, but our people. So, they brought jobs to our city, they brought close connection, and they have done a lot of things. Y'all know what my real feeling, I was so impressed that they would take your junk off your porch. And it's a, if it's a senior person with a couch, they would pick it up and put it in a dumpster for you. Those are personalized services that they made us people and they hear. And I, like I said, I, we have called and it, they used to have a designated person there that you could call. And so, I know that's something that we can work out. But economically, what has been brought to the city, that's what we're doing. We're trying to find company. They have a station here that they build and they are preserving our roads where we didn't have them before. They had trenches, I walk in the morning, you'll slide off the curb where they were digging those holes in the, just between the road, uh, just from walking. You couldn't walk on the edge because of that. And so, the, the, and then when you go out, I'm five thirty walker, you see people, you greet them and you know who they are and you're comfortable that they're in your yard and walking and doing, and can they help? And they pick up stuff. I know people leave stuff that's not supposed to be on the side of the street. Those guys will just pick it up if it's not in that, that, where it's supposed to be in the can. And they do a good job. So, what I'm saying is, if it's something that we can work out, we're getting personal service. And personal service wasn't what we were getting in the, in the beginning. So, we have a company, not only have they moved here, but they build an additional part. And that's a permanent part pretty much. And then the building that the Crockett worked with, and that's what we're doing with their baitmen and working together as a group. That's nothing more, but they, Crockett still owns the building after they leave. So, it's been a partnership. And it seemed like to start from scratch, when we have a building, and that's what we are, we've been trying to get here, that we ought to be able to work out of the kinks. Because things are not going to be cheap if you go back to bid, nothing. You can't even buy the same thing, the, the same price last week, I, I know. Anything that you buy now is additional within the last year. So, if we can work out the fine details, and like I said, they're there for us with the roll-offs, they're, they've given us comple- a lot of complimentary things. And most of all, they have hired our people, people that live in this community, people that spend money in this community. So, there might be some things that we do need to work out, the detail, but I am confident in knowing how things change that we probably won't get the, of the deal that we have now, I guess you want to use that terminology. But we probably won't get all of the accommodations that we have at this point. Cause we know where you live, we'll call him. We'll hunt him down, no.
So, is the, so basically overall, is the only issue that we're having with, um, with your company is just, uh, getting in touch with, with them or?
So, to, to clarify that before Sonny says something, um, the city administrates this contract. The city, the, uh, the, the city hall or the water office, when you call and you want, uh, an additional pickup or you want to, uh, order a new can or a new service or, hey, I, I didn't get my trash picked up today. You call city hall and we will answer you. So, we're the, um, primary point of contact. And we know how to get a And we know how to get a hold of Piney Woods. The problem, and like Mr. Marsh was saying, that there, the one service that we do not manage or administrate is the roll-off service. We do not collect funds for roll-off and pass it on to them. We do that with the residential and the, and the commercial services because we're already in a billing mode. Every business and every residence gets a water bill from us. So that's an easy way for us to administrate that process. The roll-off is one, they're one-off here projects. And so they take care of the orders of the roll-offs and they bill that person directly for roll-off services. So we're left out of that loop of communication and that's one of the biggest concerns of communication is ordering roll-offs. Hey, I've been trying to get it picked up for a few days. Right now, the, 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 the phone system, when you call that number, it will roll over to potentially anywhere within their system. All their phones ring at the same time, so anywhere, somebody from sales we could pick it up. Or, you know, Beaumont or Tyler could pick it up. And so there's just lots of little things that fall through the cracks in that communication. Um, secondly, the county does not have the city, so the county, they're direct customers of Piney Woods. If you live outside of the city limits, you get billed directly by, by, um, Piney Woods. That has also been a communication problem and I think there's a lot of overlap of complaints when people say, I've been calling for two days. Well, did you call the city? No, I don't even live in the city. Well, that's the county, you're, you're a direct customer. Call us if you're in the city and we'll fix, we'll, we'll make sure that Piney Woods shows up. And if not, we have ways to make sure that they follow through with it by, by our contract. So I think that's a big one is having a dedicated phone ser, phone line to someone here local. And if they don't pick up, we, we can drive out there and, and look at them in their face and ask them to help us on certain things, you know. Having a dedicated phone line is gonna be a big one.
That would alleviate the roll-off problem also, because it'd be the same one they can get through to.
That's a big, that's a big problem for us.
It's a big problem, plus it's a part of our business.
And, and how's the deal on the, is it still, they have the right to go up three percent every year?
CPI, so, but all the contracts that we, when, when we went out for bid, um, five years ago, all the contracts, um, had a requirement for a CPI or an automatic cap. And so this one, this one, it was five percent and we negotiated them down to. Was it three or three and a half? Three percent.
Three percent.
So, so three percent is the cap.
Right.
Even if the CPI is higher.
But they should come with, okay, deals went up, this has went up, that's why we gotta do it. If nothing's gone, nothing's changed, you know, like the one year, they didn't go up on us and the next year they went up on us six percent. I didn't like that at all. I mean, you, you skipped us a year when we first started out, okay, well, everything's good, everything, we're not gonna go up on y'all. Then the next year, you went up on us six percent instead of three. I, I don't think you should be able to do that. If you skip a year, that's just it, I mean. So, I, I, that, that's been a bird for a while on me.
Okay.
So.
Well, you know, details, that what you get, if, we can either decide that we would do a yearly deal or we skip it, we won't do it, that year, we just pick back up where we are. And those are things that can be worked out in a contract.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah. And I understand what he was saying, yeah. So what I would propose at this time, while we were going over it, that we might just pick a, pick a day, go through the contract step by step and just revisit anything that we have. Because it is a business, it's a business that's in our city, we wanna retain them, but we wanna retain them without, without any conflict. And so because we can go through the contract step by step and just have a workshop on it. And that way we can iron out, because it might be something that someone else might haven't had a chance, but you'll be able to do it. But like I said, the heart of this business to me is that they're taking care of our people. And that it is an economic development because the money they make, we're gonna get it back to, in our, and it's, the dollars are being spent here rather than people that are coming out. Our streets are being better preserved because we have lighter trucks. Uh, the equipment that they can work on is being worked on because they have the facility here. And the supplies and things are basically here. So when you look at that, you're looking at who benefits, we just need to work out the fine details. And like I said, I'm very comfortable with the personal service, we just need the detail service taken care of. So I would propose or recommend that we pick a day to revisit, to sit down and after we've had a look and have our recommendations together and go over them individually. I don't know if that's something.
I, I would prefer to do that, cause I did, I did read through the contract. And I did have some, some questions in general, but, uh, it's not, I mean, it's something that we, like you say, need to fine tune. And it's nothing major or anything like that, I just think it's something that we can work toward and that we can.
There's nothing, yeah, there's nothing.
Yeah, so we're in agreement that we.
Evil things we need to work out.
We can work out things, that's what you wanna hear. We work out the fine details and I don't, and we have enough in that timeline. We don't wanna go out to bids, cause we do know it's gonna be a change. And then we're gonna be, it's gonna be some little hidden things that we won't see until after we start doing the service. But we do know what you are, where you are, we do know the service, we do know your personnel and we're appreciative of it. So what we'll do is based on, make a recommendation and then we'll set a designated time that works for everybody.
Well, what I would do in the meantime is I'll make a list for the telephone because.
Okay.
They've got a guy in the corporate office that buys telephones for the whole company, so we, it'll take a week to get it. And we'll have a phone number, a local number, and, uh, I'll present that to you, y'all can give it out whenever you want to.
Mr. Sunny, I think Tim, Tim is, uh, gave me his number before and I, they would reach him, so.
That's what I'm gonna tell y'all.
Yes, sir.
Y'all have called us from everywhere. John got personal number, work room, so y'all can just call him, they don't, they don't matter.
Yes, sir, he, he was available.
We use it quite often.
Well, that's great, that we're personalized, that we even know, we're gonna knock on your door. That's what they do at the ground here, but we appreciate it. So with that being said, we are, we do appreciate the service that has gone forth and the impact that it's had on our city.
Who grew off making it good.
Well, that's great. And so at this point.
Yeah, I would just ask council that, um, y'all give us direction, y'all in a motion, give us direction to move forward with negotiations of the contract and set a, set a date to return for a, uh, discussion, uh, slash workshop or something to go over it.
Just set it up so that we don't run into any kind of problems with the amount of people show up.
That, that's, and that's the main thing is, um, that, that'd be more of a workshop scenario and that we also, I need to know that we're moving forward in this direction.
Yeah.
To make sure that I don't have to miss any timelines on the bidding process if we're going in this direction. So if y'all tell us that.
I think we move forward with this one, but.
Move forward with negotiations of a contract.
So we're gonna focus on this, we won't be looking at the bid process, we're looking at, um, fine tuning, negotiating the contract that we have.
I don't think that there's gonna be a whole lot of difference in this, this is actually a pretty decent contract. And especially the three percent because this is the, we've got one of the contract limits at about that much, but everything else goes CPI. And over the last three, three years, four years, six thousand nine, six and a half, six point eight, and a four point eight. So you said it's always been above the three percent. You know, in the year of the construction, prices of oil go up and down like.
That's why I shop around.
So. Okay, so with that being said, uh, can we get a motion?
You say you wanna consider a workshop?
Yeah, just, yes, ma'am, request, uh, if you, if you can, just request, uh, that we begin negotiations for a con, for a, an agreement renewal and set a workshop. That we're not going out for bid.
Okay, I'll make a motion that, that, uh, council consider not going out for a bid. Uh, and consider, um.
Negotiating.
Negotiation and, um, pre-planned for workshop, um, to, um, revise the contract with exclusive franchise agreement, um, with the, um, solid waste, disposal and solid waste. Um, I evoke, is that what that is? I evoke, yes.
Okay. It's a motion on the table, we're, you had a second?
My second.
Okay, we've been moving in second, all in favor? Motion carry, thank you so much.
Just notice on when the day is.
Okay, we'll give you, we'll set a date that's agreeable to.
If you have any more questions, let's see, if you have some questions, give me a call.
Yes, sir. I will, I appreciate it.
Anything I can with Tim.
Yes.
And, or JD, if he gets back, just don't make fun of the big one.
All right, sir, thank you so much.
Might appreciate it, and we'll see you guys later, mayor and I see you again.
Thank you, have a blessed.
Is there any reason that I need to stay because I live an hour and a half from here?
All right, well, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Guys, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right, move us to item two, consider an approval resolution of the city council of the city of Crockett, Texas, authorizing the submission of the grant application for fix a license plate reader acquisition finalization to the office of the governor of criminal justice division. They said criminal justice, here come the Pope.
Mayor, council, uh, this is our, the final phase of our project with license plate readers for the city. Uh, we've been working on this, uh, a little over three years now. Uh, we received the first one and we just recently received the funding for the, uh, next three. Uh, with four more, uh, we'll be able to cover the entire city, every road coming into the city with a license plate reader. Uh, the new ones that we're getting are, uh, quick deploy, uh, they're backed up with, uh, solar power. Uh, so they're a lot, a lot more, uh, energy efficient and easier to put out, cost effective. So, uh, this is the grant, uh, the last round of grants just closed, we finalized all those, uh, they reopened. We just submitted this grant, um, right at twenty thou, actually, I think twenty thousand dollars to be exact, uh, for additional. And, um, it's a hundred percent number, so the city won't, uh, we don't have to match it, and that's, that's what this resolution is for.
Is this dealing with block cameras or?
These are not block, uh, these are original solutions for Motorola, uh, they have a little larger, um, following, so to speak. Um, so, um, the numbers tend to be a lot higher with these all across the United States than with block. So, um, I think that's, uh, one reason why their prices have come down a little bit, uh, because they now have some competition. Uh, but we went with this company because they use, uh, commercial data also, uh, so it opens up the possibility a lot more.
So do we have two now or?
So currently working, we have one, we have three on the way, so that'd be four total.
Okay, cause there's two on that team, one for Love Lady and then?
One of them's, one of them's not ours.
One of them's not ours.
One of the, one of the text.
One of them's not a license plate reader.
One of them's a text dot, okay.
All right, so the one in Love Lady is not working.
Right, we've got one and we have three on the way that we just closed out this last.
Which one is ours?
Uh, the one with the speed, uh.
The one in Love Lady?
Ours is the bigger one closer to Love Lady, just on the, uh, north side of the, uh, Love Lady city.
Okay, yeah, it's not working.
What's that?
It's not working.
He tested today.
It wasn't working today.
The display doesn't always work.
Okay.
When the battery starts getting low, uh, it'll cut that display off.
It goes into a.
Okay.
It's still.
And you're getting good, good results too, good results from them.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, uh, I don't know the exact number, I should've had that tonight, uh, the stolen vehicles. So if you don't know about license plate readers, what they do is, uh.
They found a trailer.
With a computer, and if a vehicle has been tagged for the stolen, uh, human trafficking, child sex trafficking, terrorist organizations, narcotics related, or even if that vehicle's tagged to have a wanted person inside, automatically the officers, so they can go set up and wait on that vehicle. So, um, it also allows us to, at any particular time, look at our traffic count to see how many cars have come in towards Crockett. We use that like during events and stuff like that.
If that one's set up on the south side, that, does it read coming our way?
Okay, it reads in the opposite direction.
Okay.
It catches both north and south of our traffic.
Okay, good, okay.
And that's what the new ones will do too. They'll, they'll catch, uh, both, both directions.
I think it's a great tool, yeah.
I mean, you used to didn't know what direction of travel if you were out on the road or.
Beyond, beyond the actual license plate reader itself, the, uh.
You wanna testify?
Yeah, there's a lot of research like your place all across the country, uh, been a huge help on this.
That's how they can trace people, it's amazing.
What we're hoping to do would be an extra four we could, that will free up, uh, the locals and we'll be able to move it around the city in different areas where we're having issues, uh, maybe higher theft, something like that, uh, we can move it around.
That oughta have what you were asking about earlier.
Only they, uh, uh, only resolution, um, I think, I just kinda read over it and everything, just kinda get an understanding of it. Um, but there was a, um, section that I would like to add something to your, your, um, resolution.
So we can't add to these resolutions, these are, uh, these are dictated by home insecurity, uh, that, so that's where this come from, the specific requirements. Um, I'm not sure what you would like to add, I mean, I can ask them, uh, but the, these are provided to us, uh, from the governor's office as to what has to be on this resolution.
Okay, only thing, I think, uh, what I was asking to add possibly is where it says the authorized official is given the power to apply for accept, reject, alter, or terminate the grant on behalf of the applicant agency. And I was looking at up on approval of council. So is that, is that sufficient or not?
That might be something that would be added, but, uh, essentially, um, this grant and all the documentation, the filings, um, I'm responsible for, since I'm filing it through the city. But as an employee of the city, I have to have the approval of the council to submit this grant. So, um, basically what that's saying is that at any point, um, I can say, no, we're not gonna get this grant, it's gonna cost us more money or this isn't gonna work. Um, or when they notify me, uh, Chief Smith, your grant has been approved at the local level, do you wish to continue? And that gives me the authority to say, yes, we wanna continue. And basically what this resolution is for, is for me to bring the information before y'all, so y'all know exactly what it's gonna cost and what we're doing. So that there's no surprise and flavor. So, uh, that's, that's why that's working.
Okay, cause when I was looking at it, it said alter, and when it said alter, that kinda caught, stuck out to me cause I was at the point where if you make any changes and we're not aware of the change that you made, I mean, um.
Well, uh, a good point, for instance, on the last round of grants, uh, that we just got, we applied for, we didn't get awarded the full amount.
Okay.
Uh, so I had to work and my assistant chief and captain Pete back there too, we had to work with the company and alter that proposal. We had to alter that quote because the original one said four, but we didn't have enough money. So we had to work with them and get them to crunch the numbers and we were able to get three instead of four with the amounts that the state awarded us. So I think when it talks about alter, that's what it's talking about. If they come back and say, hey, if this price went up, you know, a thousand dollars, then I have to work with them and say, no, we can't do that, we need to back it down.
So with that being said, you still bringing back to council and advise us of the changes that you made?
Uh, typically I would not, um, if it's something that, um, we're not, if we didn't receive the grant funds for it, uh, my response to them would be either we need to go down in quantity or we need to make these numbers work through your company because this is what's been approved for the grant. This is what my city council has approved, if you can't do that, then we'll, we'll go somewhere else.
Maybe a little, um, input on that also, if, if there's a requirement for additional funds, like he can't commit the city to, to spending money that has not been approved. So if, if they come back and say, hey, you only, you know, if you're gonna have to buy the fourth one if you really want it, he couldn't make that kind of a decision. He's not gonna be able to commit the city to any funds that's not approved and right now he's telling you it's gonna be. Now it's going to be zero, so as long as he stays under zero, we won't have to come back.
Exactly, that's how I think of the last one, they come back, I think we applied for forty-six thousand and they come back and say, hey, you know, we can only give you twenty-two thousand seven fifty. So we had, had to take some off, we had to take some equipment off, we had to make those numbers work so that it fell over because that, that money is from the state, it's not from the city, so we had to make it work where it fell under that number. Because that, that money is from the state, it's not from the city, so we had to make it work where it fell under that number.
Yeah, I was just looking over and reading it, because there's a, a lot of times there's a play on words, so I always want to make sure that I was good with it.
Do you have any other comments, questions? Okay, can we get a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the resolution, number R O two D twenty-five, to allow Chief Smith to apply or submit for the grant application for the license plate reader.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor. Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to item number seven. Consider and approve a proposal for the City of Crockett and the Crockett Area Chamber of Commerce to host the Freedom Over Crockett Independence Day Fireworks Show and cover any funding shortfall not met by donations if necessary.
Mayor and Council, due to this being a little bit of a moving target, and we're shooting for a project in July, I wanted to bring it to you so we could begin working hard on. It's kind of the egg or the chicken process, because we can't go out and bring in a lot of funding and donations for a project that council has not approved or is not going to back up and, and say that we're good on having. So, that being said, we feel, we've done this two years now, this will be our third year. The first year, we had a budget of twenty-five thousand, and we were, we were able to raise about twenty-seven thousand. We had a little bit of funding left over. Going into last year, we had some aspirations to make it just a little bit bigger and better than the previous year. Then we fell just slightly short, so we were about three thousand, three thousand dollars under in raising the necessary donations. So we wanted to bring that number back down to twenty-five thousand. The first year was twenty-five, then we went, increased it to thirty thousand. So we wanted to bring the budget down to about twenty-five thousand. We do have a lot of committed people that have, have said that their business will donate the funds too. So we have an idea of what we're going to get, but I cannot guarantee you that every one of those checks will cash. And, or you know, everybody's going to be able to support it. I do feel pretty confident, as reasonably as possible, that twenty-five thousand is probably a safe, doable budget. A lot of the other things that we do outside of that to make that project happen, does not cost us any additional funds. A lot of this money also goes back into advertising for those businesses. The businesses that donate towards this project, we're able to put some banners up and do some newspaper ads and radio ads of all the businesses that support our fire, our Freedom Over Crockett Fireworks Show. This, this past year, I also had, or this current year, I had someone, someone else that it, that actually is local. They're out of Elkhart, and, well, fairly local, and they said that they're interested in submitting a bid as well. I did ask them to submit a bid based on twenty-five thousand, so essentially, you can ask for anything. And the cost, what I've learned to find, come to find out, a three inch mortar shell to a four inch, five inch, six inch, it's not just a small incremental change, it's three to four times, so a five inch is considerably more than a four inch, not just a little bit more. So if you, so if you go out and ask them, say, hey, put me a proposal together, they may put a bunch of, you know, three inches or four inches and less of the others. So we asked them to maximize our budget, the proposal for twenty-five, based on a twenty-five thousand dollar bid, so y'all can kind of see an apples to apples comparison of kind of how big of a show this would be. Last year, we went up to eight inches. Eight inches were visible from further off, like you could see them across town, on the other side of the loop you could see them. But you, the bulk of the people that were there to enjoy them, couldn't really tell the difference because they shoot straight up in the air.
And it goes slow forward.
So if it's here or here, you don't see the difference. And so we were able to get bigger bang for buck, by dropping it down to six inch. That's what we did the first year, and we had really, a really good showing, and lots of, you know, good feedback on it. So this is what both of these quotes are based off of, are a bulk of six inch shells, five inch shells, four inch, three inch, and down to two and a half inch shells. The other quote, the second page, is the quote from the, the pyrotechnic group that did, has done it the previous two years. Both of these groups, I feel good about, obviously one of them we have history with, Pyro Shows of Texas. The other one is a local group, like I say, so I asked them for some references. I called some other cities that they've done it for, school districts, they do graduation ceremonies, and, or, you know, graduation fireworks shows, as well as for some other cities. And so I got good feedback from those cities in, in school. So the, the other difference is, the first one, Wilson Family Pyrotechnics, they're available to shoot on the day of July fourth, that Friday. The other group is only available, their Fridays are fully booked. They do about twenty to thirty shows, you know, every day. So they didn't have any extra crews to put together a Friday show. That's the number one available, you know, date, or date that people request, so they didn't have any availabilities then. So they can do that Saturday, if we wanted to move it to a Saturday. And so that's kind of another compare, or, you know, difference between the two contracts. One, the first one, well, Wilson Family Pyrotechnics can do it on the Friday or a Saturday. The other group can only do it on a Saturday. That being said, I, I truthfully feel good about both of these entities, and that's why I'm, you know, I have to, I want y'all's input on it. Doing it with a company that we've done it with before, there's a reasonable amount of, you know, comfort in that, that they're not going to let us down, or they don't have all the necessary equipment, or they show up and they have some technical difficulties and they don't fire them all, and there's things that happen all the time in fireworks shows, so it's always good to have somebody that is really good at it. So that being said, I know Pyro Shows.
How long has Wilson Company been in business?
Uh, for quite a few years. They've actually, they began, they've shot for several of these bigger groups, the Pyro Shows. There's a Gulf Coast show, Pyro, Pyrotechnics. So they've fired off for them, and, but have recently, just in the last three or four years, opened up their own company. And so.
It would be better to do it on the force, man.
I like that.
And, but that being said, that would be my biggest concern, is going with a new provider and, and, because getting back on the list with the old one is also going to be tough. It was hard to get in their queue as a, as a, them as being our vendor. So moving to a new company, I wanted to be sure it was a good company to present to y'all. And I feel like this is a good company to present to them, and I spoke to the other cities as well.
You, you spoke to the cities they've done them for?
Yes, sir.
And that was okay?
Yes, sir.
I suppose they're local.
And they're, and they, so if you look at the breakdown of the shells, the, the breakdown of the shells is eleven hundred. This did not get transferred over, but that, the shell quantity, and like I say, this is not any different than previous years, but the Pyro Shows, for that amount of money in that, in their shell breakdown, they provided a few more six inches than the other company, but overall, they've only, they're providing about six, six hundred shells, and, and the other companies providing eleven hundred shells for that same value. And I think a lot of it is because of, they're not transporting these from, this other company, I believe, transports them from Austin. So they have to get Texas dot permitting and lots of costs in bringing that, and they stay overnight at the hotel. And we, and then they pay for a police officer to sit out and watch it. This other group, being local, can bring them right in and set up that day without having to pay overnight security.
Well, I mean, that hesitation kind of didn't do, I mean, we had a lot of bang, but that little hesitation, then nobody really gets the full value of it. Because we went home. We thought, we thought the party was on.
My, my, my only question about the whole thing is, is the fact that they could do it Friday or Saturday, and we know that July the fourth is the big fireworks. And, and, and they, they've got both dates open. That, that's my only concern about it.
Well, they, they've got both dates open, but they have more people, they're, they're doing more shows than just ours.
Yeah, Wilson?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they got, they got several people that go and do this show.
What, you, you and I talking about the same one, Wilson in Elkhart?
So, so, and, and Wilson, a big reason, they're, they're trying to expand and do more of these shows. So like I say, they're fairly new, they're, they're not, they haven't been out for.
So what are some of their references? What are some of their references?
Uh, the City of Mahalia, I called, I called the City of Mahalia, and actually I spoke to the fire chief who was involved with them, and if anybody's not going to care for the fireworks group, is going to be the fire chief. And he said they were very professional, set up, everything went off. You know, any of our concerns, they addressed them. I also spoke to the City of, or the School District, they, they did the Elkhart graduation ceremony for Elkhart ISD. And then spoke to a couple of the other big Pyro Shows that they contract for.
That sounds like that, the people that own that culprit company up there too, possibly.
I thought so, but they're not.
They're not?
He said possibly long distance.
Oh, okay.
Or, you know, somewhere back down the road, but they're not directly related to Wilson. But that's what I would have assumed as well.
So those are the only two references you, you spoke with on their behalf or?
No, four of them. The other two, I can't remember. One was Gulf, Gulf Coast, out of Houston, Beaumont area, Pyrotechnics that they contract for, and the other one was North Texas Pyros, out of Dallas area, that they contract with.
I guess if you got good, you know, they, they come highly recommended from other people who have used them, you know. That's fine with me.
Okay, what do, can we get a recommendation or?
I make a motion, we go with Wilson, out of Elkhart.
My second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor. Wilson, we will. Okay, with that being said, that brings us to our final item, is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's in an executive session at this time. We will, we're drawing. Y'all may stay, take your shoes off, sit at your seat. Got the ticket, I hit the button. Oh, cool. Okay, Mr. Sunny.
Was he just a business car?
Yeah, I got the numbers on the back.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Tim, yeah. He's real, he's real, though. I got his little, his numbers, yeah.
The only thing I want my heart, you know. And I don't know why.
That's why I have the privilege, when it's not for him. Yeah, to me.
He's just a.
On my way. Oh, you go? Oh, no, we were, we were in conference, I couldn't get out, but okay, well, that's, don't be going up. Okay.
I tell you, she's lucky that her sister was there when it could, it hadn't been till noon, she went home. Waited to take everything out and.
Pretty good. He borrowed it.
He's sitting there, I guess, seeing, you know.
He, he was standing there, he was like, yeah.
But it's not your place.
Exactly.
It's different. That's why I'm kind of, I'm trying to turn around.
Yeah, I know, I know.
No.
Exactly. I, I answered by, yeah, he over at the moment all the time. And I think he told me once before, when I called, that he should, he was the council.
Very careful.
Okay, so.
If we talk to him, he's going to pay more than I. He can help me out, and tell me, and I'm like, that's great, and I appreciate all that, but.
Exactly, exactly.
It's just Crockett.
So is he one of them, that they've ever done that, with everybody?
Yeah, that's the lot I get. And he, he talked about the city council, he told me about some of the businesses he wants on.
And he said, so what do you do for a day?
Yeah, I'm retired. I'm tired of working.
So I said, well, I'm, I'm going to the ranch a bit now. And he said, he said, you know, I almost have a ranch now, dude. Two thousand, I think it's, I think it's a down, a ranch or something. He's been in the ranch a bit. And so I figured, I figured when it gets, it gets a little bit everywhere.
He's been far there. I stayed a few minutes. An hour. Well, I guess you have to deal with, everybody thinks they're such important. So you gotta listen.
Yeah, that's true.
Sometimes you're going, it's unproductive, but it's important to you, so that's what I do.
Right, that's exactly.
I bet everybody live, everybody said that, huh? Swing and go. I'm all three, uh. Almost get about care of, and I have to, for the four kids, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Yeah, I mean, that team, five, that team come up. Uh, we're, uh, we're, uh, uh. Do, do you have a problem with the lady? There's a reason, so, other than, uh. There's a trouble about that, I asked, I was. Was that wrong? There were, oh, he's somebody, they're, sure. Yeah, I think, you mean, the, you know. The two, uh, December, we're trying to, uh, we can't, uh, so now. They didn't, they didn't have a, uh, I think, I think, yeah, in my car. She was on it, uh, she was, uh, uh. I don't like it, because I don't want to see you here, and I don't, I don't, I was, I was smart, I don't know. Yeah, I think you're, uh, you have lots of people on the end, but we would kind of, we would think it was, you know, exactly. What we're getting from this, uh, kind of, you know. Yeah, that, uh, yeah, you know, uh, on, uh, who's there? My, my, that was. You probably, it was not, but it's not. Want to do it all, do it all. I don't think, if you were comfortable, yeah, that is, uh, part of, uh, right. Yeah. One of the last, uh, one of the, uh, uh, uh. Uh, I don't. This is, uh, uh, two, two years. A little bit. Uh, we, uh, uh, uh. All. From here, there's a lot of issues, it's one of our. We didn't have all, uh, private, uh, work, uh, mission, mission, deep, uh, uh. But, uh, she's not, you know, uh, 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 uh. I don't like it, uh, uh, uh. Uh, 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 uh. First, we, uh, I don't need to, uh, uh. No, for cheap, uh, 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 uh. It was all, uh, yeah. That's, that, that's our story.